Parents, you are your child's greatest influence. Talk early, talk often about the risks of substance use on their developing brains. Check out grizzledpride.org, grizzledpride.org, grizzledpride.org.
Family owned and operated. That's something you don't hear too often anymore. Highway campers of Plainfield is now three generations in and going strong. If you're looking to upgrade or get your first RV, contact the family that knows RVs. Highway campers, they'll walk you through the process of finding the right RV for you and can even finance it for you. Visit www.highwaycampers.com and find your home on wheels. After all, home is where you park it. Highway campers is a proud supporter of Griswold youth football.
Summer is winding down, which means it's the perfect time to fall into your annual maintenance routine. Get those car tires checked, safely secure the grills and gas tanks, button up the beach house and winterize the boats. Why not add an insurance review to the list? Call the Burns Agency to compare coverages and get quoted unbeatable prices today. Home, auto, business, call, chat, or email us today. The Burns Agency proudly serving Eastern Connecticut since 1932.
Why is the basketball court all wet?
Because the players kept dribbling on it.
The dad joke, corny, groan worthy, but also one of the simplest ways to share a moment with your kids.
What did the buffalo say when he dropped his son off for school? Bye, son.
So take a moment to make your kid laugh because dad jokes rule. Make your kid laugh today. Go to fatherhood.gov. Brought to you by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and the Ad Council.
Mike Minarski and Rich Wasselik in the morning and eighties all day and night.
They're not human. They control the matrix.
SN SN.
Summer is winding down, which means it's the perfect time to fall into your annual maintenance routine. Get those car tires checked, safely secure the grills and gas tanks, button up the beach house and winterize the boats. Why not add an insurance review to the list? Call the Burns Agency to compare coverages and get quoted unbeatable prices today. Home, auto, business, call, chat, or email us today. The Burns Agency proudly serving Eastern Connecticut since 1932.
They're not human. They control the matrix.
SN SN. Your community radio.
Live from Main Street.
Mike Minarski and Rich Wasselik in the morning and eighties all day and night.
SN SN.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the show here at SN SN on our new digs. On 70 Main Street here in the borough of Jewett City at the Paragon Co-op. Myself, Mike, and we got Kathy Wasselik here. Kathy, how are you doing?
Good, good. How are you?
Good morning. You've been up for quite some time already this morning.
Yep, I'm making an early run to the airport.
Airport and back already. And then of course today, we have a special show with a couple of folks from Grizzle Public Schools. Number one, we have the Board of Education Chairwoman, that's Mary Beth May. Good morning.
Good morning.
And the Grizzle Public School Superintendent Sean McKenna.
Good morning. Thanks for having us.
Thank you for all of the fun, fun gifts. So, so let's see, you got, see, I got a.
Yeah, that did come from Griswold High School and Aaron's team, so. Oh, because I'm doing the wrong.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at the wrong camera. That's what I'm doing.
Okay.
I'm still radio, you know, it's like.
Got it. So I got that, you know, this nice cup here. I got these stickers which are now in front, but they're like, they're like translucent or whatever. They're really cool.
Griswold stickers with the brand standards and yeah.
Um, got a backpack. This is not a bottle opener. So you know. What is this? Is this like a bungee clip?
It's a clip. You can use it as a keychain. You can, you know, you can.
And then you can clip it on your.
Backpack or belt.
You have no idea.
This I really like. I really like all of it, but I mean, this is really, really cool. This notebook here, you got a pen, which is really cool and.
And everything there is recycled, including the pet, which is kind of cool. Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. If you hold the pen, it's got like it's recycled. Materials. See what I'm saying?
Oh, it feels like cardboard, like, like a, like a plasticky cardboard. That's cool.
Now, this is, this is all, these are all items that you can get at, on the Grizzle website.
There's stuff that we have at our school that we, you know, provide our students and it's stuff for marketing Griswold High School. Yeah.
Got a pin. I can, I can kind of pin that right next to my tattoo. Might hurt.
And then I got a wristband. Wolverine strong. Put that on right now.
So I'm a, personally, I'm a big Grizzle guy just because I went to Grizzle High School. Um, I went through the entire Grizzle Public School system and stuff like that. There have been so many changes, you know, of course, you know, since when I was, you know, at Grizzle High School. One of the things I thought was, was wild as a kid was watching the former football field become a soccer field. And see, I never made it to the new, the high school that, well, to me, it's the new high school because I went to high school over at what the middle school is now. Now, where there's a, another metamorphosis that is, I'm going to say hopefully going to go through and happen. Um, I'm, I'm telling you, I'm its biggest fan. I'm its biggest fan. You know what we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Is the, 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 the new multi-purpose athletic field that's being proposed. Can you give us an update on what's happening with that? I know that, I know there was just some, maybe a little bit of movement at the Board of Education meeting on Monday. So Sean, I'll give you the floor.
So this, this is a proposal that came from the community and we had an ad hoc committee that formed a few years ago with Shannon Webster and Marty Osga from the Board of Ed. And there were some parents, Michelle D'Amico, Jeff Cassidy, people that were involved with Griswold youth sports. And were really dedicated and knew it from the ground up that improvements were needed. You didn't have to do a scientific study or a business study, just improvements were needed for our community. And we're not just talking about the football field. We're also talking about the track. Our campus, as you know, is, it's the community center. It's the heart of the district. It's the heart of the community. And so these fields are used by our high school athletes. They're used by our families. They, they're used by the youth groups. And when these teams and these families go to other communities to participate and to compete. And we've got great facility, you know, we do have great facilities, but they see what the fields are looking like. They're saying, we want this for our kids. We want this for our community. We want this for Griswold. And so that's where it came from. So I want to, you know, salute all of those folks and our Board of Ed. And we started working with Al Carpenter, who is, has been, he's an engineer in this area, highly well respected. Just to kind of sort of start the conversation.
And he has, he's done these fields before.
He did do. Killingly's Field, very.
Does many other things too.
Yeah.
His team and his company are extremely busy. They did the Walmart project in Brooklyn. It took them eight years to get approval, but they did it. That was very controversial up there, but regardless, um, so he's very well versed in many things and he does do a lot of fields.
So, so we went to the Board of Finance and back in, I want to say May or June, they were generous enough to appropriate $30,000 for field study because you want good information. You don't want to, you don't want to cannonball into this and it's a, it's a pool with no water. And then, you know, it's a mess. So Al and his team have been getting dirt samples. They've been looking at plans. They've been looking, they've been working with our facilities crew. They've been just collecting the necessary information that is needed to do the study and say, this is what's going to, what it's going to look like. He did, he did do a presentation to the ad hoc committee in the Board of Education about a month ago. The study is about, I would say 90% done, but there's some like final touches. That proposal is coming to the Board of Ed on the 28th of November at the regular meeting. And I can tell you it, you know, just from, this is my seventh year here. This is bar none, the most talked about.
Sure.
Topic. And I would argue favorably that I've, that I've heard since I've been here. I mean, more so than other things because there's a, there's just, there's a, I believe Griswold's on the move as a district. Um, our numbers are up in terms of, of enrollment. Our tuition numbers are up. The digital sign, which is beautiful. Thank you, Griswold. Thank you taxpayers for supporting that.
Love that sign.
Love it. Athlete of the week. Families love to see their kids. Our girls volleyball team, they, I think they had a glorious. We did a great job. The cross-country team, state champs.
Yeah, we recognize them Monday night at our Board of Ed meeting.
We recognize that. And we know that sports is a vital part of, of students' high school experience. So this multi-purpose field, and I want to stress the term, multi-purpose. It's not just football, but it is football.
And I'll be honest with you, Sean, what I, what I get at from people when I talk to them and Mary Beth, I want to address you too, that's what I hear. Football, football, football. And I do say, well, it's not just football.
It's also for our.
Girl soccer, boy soccer, girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, girls track, boys track. Cheerleading is a serious sport. When I see what these young ladies can do, it's amazing. Cheerleading can go out there if we ever have, expand the band and marching band. And it's great for the community.
It's state tournaments.
It will be able to host state tournament tournaments.
Right now we have a six lane track. We're going to go to an eight line track and then we can hold the state tournaments here. They can come to Griswold and have their track meets here. Nice.
That's awesome.
It is very excited about it.
We're very excited. And the way that the Griswold, I think you guys would all agree, again, you don't have to be an engineer. You don't have to be a rocket scientist, but the scientists, but the way that that field currently is, it has a, well, the field, but it has this sort of stadium feel to it. Cause you have to go down the stairs. You have to go down the walkway. But if you, if you've get this improved and you get this new turf field and the track and you have, you're able to do state competitions. What a win for Griswold.
Absolutely.
What a win.
Yep.
You're not talking, you gotta talk to the blue light.
Yeah. So we're very, very excited and I, I haven't heard really any negativeness about it. People want it. They say our kids, our athletes deserve this. And Griswold deserves it. People use that track to walk on and it's not great right now. It really isn't. And.
It's been resurfaced, what, twice?
Has. And it's just based, that was basically putting a Band-Aid on the situation. And the longer we wait, the more expensive this is going to become.
I mean, I know that when I myself go do, you know, broadcast different games, one of the places I go to a lot is Stonington because of youth sports and all.
Oh, yeah.
Beautiful field.
Well, we couldn't have a football game here once, right? This year, they had to move it to Stonington because our field couldn't.
Are you talking about the youth game?
Maybe it was youth.
It was youth.
But they had, they had to move it. And as everybody says, we have the best seating. Or we have the worst football field. When they showed us last year, the drone shot looking down on the field, it was a shocker. It was a shocker because you don't really get that unless you're looking straight down.
You're talking about the, the field itself?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's a mess.
God forbid it rains.
Drainage problem down there and it's a mess. Yep. And if it's 35 years old, people don't get it. It's 35 years old. Nothing lasts forever.
John Hen can only do so much, you know, I mean. Yeah. But anyway, yeah, you're, you're absolutely spot on. I mean, I see it every week. Just, you know, when I show up into that booth and it, it scares me even this past weekend because we were supposed to get some torrential downtours. So I'm on the phone with Jeff Cassidy, you know, saying, so what's going on?
Jeff is on that ad hoc committee. So I want to thank him.
And he's very, he's, you know, he's very interested, you know, on what's going on with this. But I, I think I blew up his phone a little too much. Jeff, we're moving to Stony to Jeff, are we doing this? Are we going to be able to play a Grizzle? And he was like, nope, it's going to be fine. And it was.
Right. We didn't get the rain. We didn't get the rain where we're supposed to.
But there's that concern, you know what I mean?
Concern, the weather for that field.
And with a multi-purpose field, there is not that concern.
No.
So there you go.
Yep. Well, and I think if you want to be competitive, you know, you're trying to, you know, like you said, the numbers are up, but you don't want them to, you know, be linear. You want, you want them to keep going up.
That's right.
You know, and you're competing against other towns, you know, constantly. You need to compete.
20% of our teams are fielded by the tuition towns. So 80% is Griswold students, but 20%, so we have to, you know, we have to keep that in mind because we do want to be competitive and we know we're competitive. And we, you know, we just did a thing yesterday with our tuition town partners and it, you know, I'm going to knock on wood here. You know, we continue to get more students because I think that they see the sort of quality experience at the high school. They see, they see the nexus. They see the new learning commons. They see the opportunities. The weight room that we have. They see that we're, you know, we continue to have students go into the armed services. We continue to have students successfully with our youth manufacturing pipeline, get jobs at EB, good jobs. And we're getting kids, and I can't say this.
AJ Hamill.
Yeah, we're getting kids into Yale. We're getting kids into Brown. We're getting kids. We had a student that was accepted to West Point already. Comprehensive high school. It's, this is only going to make things better.
Yeah.
And I think Griswold deserves it.
I do too. And I, and I've gone out and said it many times and I'll continue to sing the song that uh, this is something that is needed here. It is something that is going to help push us over to the next level. It has to, you know, otherwise we're just going to sit back and just keep taking our licks, but you can't do that.
You know, when people say to me, sometimes they're like, well, you know, you're focusing, they'll say, you are focusing. Why are you, are you still focusing on the, yeah, we're focusing on the academics. You know, our summer learning program was one of 19 in the state that got recognized this summer. So I mean, we are, we are balancing that, but kids, we know athletics are an important component to keeping them involved, keeping them safe.
Yep.
Keeping them healthy.
Absolutely.
Uh, let's see, let's kind of hit the board for a second. Uh, Scott Fryer, the newest member of the Board of Education. Says we can also host ECC events, which is, uh, Steve Cravino says this will be a true multi-purpose field. And I'm assuming that's because of all of the sports and everything that it offers.
That, that's true.
Just football.
It's not just football. And I, you know, I'm glad Steve mentioned that and it, it does include girl sports. That includes, you know, and again, our football field, as is the case with the football field, it is encircled by a track. So it's the track, it's the field, it's the whole caboodle.
Uh, Sarah Confer, who her son's just recently graduated from Grizzle High School. Thank you to the Board of Education and Grizzle Public Schools for pushing this forward. Not only is it going to be an asset for the town, but it's going to be a safer surface for our kids to play on.
Absolutely.
Uh, now of course, here we go. Here's, here's, here's the next question. And this comes from Victoria, who just happens to be a Board of Ed member in Sterling. But they only have seven people in Sterling. Sorry, Victoria. Basic question where everybody is, this is the biggest question. Where's the funding coming from?
Well, it's, it's, you know, it is, it's a good question. It's a natural question and we're going to have to sort that through with the next steps. If it comes to fruition, because you know, I, I get quoted on saying things and I get calls on the weekend. I'm like, I didn't say that. This is very much in the study phase. Um, and we have to sort that out. You know, and people say, well, where's it going? I don't have an exact answer at this point in time. I don't.
It's still very early in the process.
Of course it is. But you know, the thing about the Grizzle Board of Education, and I do have to say this, and it's not to trigger any kind of negative response. We are a revenue generator for the town. We are. And we're proud to do that. And we're proud of our relationships with other boards and commissions. We are a revenue generator for the town. We started a few years ago with four tuition towns. We're now up to seven. We try to project reasonably. We've exceeded our projections in terms of.
Awesome.
This is what you wanted to talk about too. Yeah.
So, you know, we feel as though it's a healthy, and you know, I don't want to get criticized. It's a healthy business partnership. And we know that in talking to Al Carpenter, um, who will have some sort of projection. This also has the opportunity to bring in more revenue in terms of the state competitions, summer camps, those sorts of things.
Yep. Now, is there any potential for grants or anything like that that, that you know of? Like how, you know, what are the options for funding? I mean, obviously we, I think everybody knows elephant in the room taxes obviously is one of them. But are there other options to look into or?
So we did look in early on into a potential grant opportunity, but it's more for urban environments. Mary Beth and I are going to schedule, we're working with Heather Summers to see if she can help support us in any way, shape or form. I don't know off the top of my head, but when we started going down that grant opportunity thing.
It's really limited for something like this unless you're doing like a town recreation field and this really still, it doesn't qualify for that. All right. You know. But options are being looked into. We are, and we're hoping to re, to connect with Heather Summers and have a good discussion with her and see what she can help us with as far as from the state. Perfect. Okay. Good.
Uh, Rich says schools are the, you know.
Yeah, I might, I might. Does he have a lot of time on his hands? He does have a lot of time on his hands right now.
Uh, school is the anchor of any community. Have to keep it for the community.
Wow. Thanks, Rich.
Jennifer Glot here. Know this again, probably, I don't know if this is a fair or unfair question, but you guys decipher.
Sure.
What is the estimate cost?
Right now, that's a good question, Jennifer. It's between two and $3 million. I don't have an exact figure. I'm going to let them present that to the board on the 28th, we're hoping. And they will have, I call it, no pun intended, a ballpark estimate. No, because we have to say that because we know that with, with supply chain issues, with any kind of project, we're doing the senior center. That project right now is sort of our focus, as you know, and Rich is on the school building committee. It, you know, when we wrote that grant, that was almost two years ago, we had a cost estimate in mind, right? Things have changed. Supply things have changed. Um, the real estate market, as Mary Beth knows, and the construction market has changed. So we hope that we're still in the ballpark for that particular project and, and that was what we could do with grants. So to, to your other point, Kathy, if there is a grant opportunity out there, we'll pursue it. But you know, you never know. You never know what the ultimate cost is going to be until you get into the, there's good people. To Jennifer's question, we are working with rock solid people.
Good.
Yeah. Jennifer asks another question to follow up. She goes, if funding is not available through bonding or taxes, can it be raised through fundraising? It's a lot of money to buy sausage.
Start selling those candy bars now. They started some fundraising, uh, the dollar figure, I believe it's under $5,000 right now, but it's, it's a lot.
That's two years in the making.
Right. Yeah. Right. So.
And people try, you know, Shannon Webster, who was, was on the forefront, Steve Cravino, um, did a lot, they did a lot of work with fundraising. People have tried and it's great that we've, we're very appreciative. Listen to me, if someone donates $2, I'm happy. We're appreciative of that. This is just a project of scale. And if there is a donor out there and your airwaves come forward.
If there is any kind of ghost donor out there that just wants to drop a check.
The ghost of Griswold future.
We do have a separate account set up for any donation.
There's a slot.
Yeah. We do have online donations.
Oh, is there, is there a link to that that you can?
We can provide, yeah, we can provide. It's on, actually it's on our website on Griswold's engage. So.
Okay. So now I'm like myself, like I am now a homeowner in Griswold. Yes. You know, so when people say to me, so now I look at things a little bit differently.
No.
You know, I mean.
I look at them how you're looking at them. Do you? I know my taxes will probably go up. My taxes are going to go up for the senior center. Okay. The infrastructure. Okay.
Get a look at the reason.
But the way I look at it is someone supported my children when they were here in school. I don't have children here in school anymore. I have two little granddaughters, but they're very little. But I want to pay it back. I want to provide, I want to be supportive of these students that are coming, that are now and coming through the school system. I owe it to them.
Yeah. Cause one of the things I hear a lot is I don't have any kids in Grizzle Public Schools. Why would I want to pay for this? And I look at my, my basic question is, the return is, did, did you vote yes on the senior center? Uh huh. You don't go to the senior center, do you?
No.
Oh, okay. And then I just kind of.
But it's also, it also, as I say, when I'm, you know, showing people houses in town, especially if they're relocating in from wherever. Cause I do corporate relocation with big companies. Um, they, first thing, where's the school? Where's the school? That's huge. So we, sometimes I've had to take them to tours of each building. I've had to arrange it with guidance department. And as I say, this is the crown jewel of the town. It is the crown jewel. That is the first question I get every time I'm dealing with relocation people. Where are the schools? I want to see them. And what they like is we have all three buildings housed on one campus. You're not driving all over the place. You're right there. And I experienced that with my kids because they were four years apart. So I was right there in, in all the buildings. I didn't have to go all over the place.
And, and sometimes I think, and people that know me, they know I'm from a very blue collar background, born and raised in New London. Parents work, parents work their butts off to send me to college and everything. And I think sometimes we overcomplicate things, but I'm going to, I'm going to give you a pop quiz that Kathy and Mike, I know you're going to get 100.
I don't test well.
Choice. It's very simple. When you're a homeowner and you're a prospective homeowner, owner, and you're driving by places and you drive by Grizzle Public Schools and you see that new sign, what do you think?
I think it looks great. It draws you in, makes you want to know more.
Bingo. Thank you for playing.
Exactly. And the other thing is too, is boy, that's, that's image right there.
That really to me, when, when. That sign is huge. It was like the completion, almost the completion of the campus and the field will be the completion. But people have raved about it. They're like, you can read it when you go by.
Yes.
You can, and it's because.
You see the kids are wonderful students.
I see Michaela Nielsen right on it, you know. You know, I mean.
I was pulling in one night to have a meeting with him and I, I'm like, I'm like, okay, this is just little. But I said, I pulled in and there's a mom taking pictures of her student as the student's picture is on the screen. That is. And that, that was just so nice and cute. They were proud of their students and that they're on as athlete of the week.
And thank you to.
Thank you to the booster club for also doing that.
Rocks, you know, they did that. And then thank you. Yep, yep. They need the bricks and every, Marty was.
One day I'm going down 138 and I go, call Sean, Sean, you're never going to believe what I just saw. He's like, what? I go, Marty is over at the firehouse. And he's down on the ground and he's measuring that sign and everything. He goes, you've got to be kidding me. I go, no. So I went and I did what I had to do and I came back, he was still there dealing and because he wanted to measure, he wanted to know how far off the ground it was coming. Yeah. But it's, it's an amazing sign that everybody just loves it. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, to your point, when I drive by, I had to, yeah, but I had to do mock interviews at the high school the other day. So I came out and I came out through the middle school and I'm just like, and I just literally, there was, I had, I look, is anybody behind me trying to go? No, I just sat there and watched the sign.
And what's great about that sign? It's Griswold. It's, it's the Mason mark. It's the, 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 the top was Camaro signs. It's Marty Osga who has a long, long history with building projects and different projects.
The masonry, I think was La Pointe.
La Pointe, yeah, La Pointe.
Their town.
Yeah.
You know, and a tribute to, you know, the guys on our facilities crew that did the landscaping around. So I think it's genuine. I think it's authentic, but I think it's pointing to the future. And if I'm driving by and I'm from New York and I look at this, I'm like, geez.
No, what's this place? What's, what's going on here?
This school district. And then you go to our website and we have the wonderful Kayla Hedman, Griswold grad, marketing. Yeah. I, I, I've got superintendent, no kidding.
They want to know who's doing it. They're like, oh, don't worry about that. It was just someone we. That is the best compliment. You know, when somebody, when, when somebody else is like, hey. Quite a few superintendents that have said, who's doing your website? That's, well, don't worry about it. Don't worry. We won't let the. You're doing something right. We're happy.
Ted Coziel, morning Ted.
Hi Ted.
Says, imagine what a beautiful multi-purpose field would draw. If you build it, they will come, dot, 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 and stay.
So Ted, thank you Ted. A huge thanks. He was another person on the committee again with Jeff and Shannon Webster, Marty, Michelle D'Amico. They get it. They're, they're involved with youth sports. These, these, these are your expert witnesses.
Jamie McGuire Cassidy or just Jamie Cassidy.
Hi Jamie.
She goes, I was one of those mothers taking pictures of my kid.
Maybe it was the one.
It's there. It's there for everybody. It's there for everybody.
Diana wants to know, and this, uh, you know, I'm sure this is on the radar somewhere. What's the condition of the baseball? What's the condition of the baseball field? I can tell you that.
Well, I can tell you too.
This is a sore subject with me, Mary Beth knows why. We, we, I wanted Al to do a whole master plan. It costs a little bit more money. It caught, but see, my Italian grandmother, it costs money, it costs money to make money. And we wanna get to that. So I think she raises a good point.
Probably in the next phase.
Next phase, next study.
Get over this phase.
Yeah, cuz I know even coaching football last year.
Yeah.
Uh, when it rained for more than two minutes, there was a Koi pond at shortstop.
Did you backstop?
I did, you know, it was, it was nice, it was two feet.
I think, I think if we can get over this and get this completed, the rest will all fall into place and it's much easy. It's much easier to handle that and a few other things.
Uh, we got a few more minutes, right?
Yeah.
It's 20 after.
Thank you for having us.
Oh, absolutely. Um, it's been long overdue. Jen says, if we fully fund athletic fields, you know, before I read this, let me ask you guys a question. Do you think it would be advantageous to have like a monitor right here pointing this way so everybody could read the comments? Cuz you guys can't read the comments as it sits right now unless you're, unless you're scoping on your phone.
I think that would help, it would help you guys. Yeah, I mean, but you guys are doing a nice job.
No, but I'm serious.
Space, I love it. Yeah.
You can read a heading and prepare for the next question.
Redesigning with us, so this is cool, this is cool.
Sure, we're all doing it together.
Yeah, we are doing it together.
Are you my radio wife now?
I didn't know Kathy's doing a great job.
I get paid the big bucks.
Both dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, Jen says, if we, see, this is one of those comments that I wish we had a TV up here. Uh, if we fully fund, fund athletic fields for the students, will we be fully funding these sports that are pay to play right now? And reinstate?
Reinstate.
And drama or arts programs that have been attritioned? Have there been any drama or arts programs attritioned?
Well, let me, let me tell you this. This is a funny story. Pay to play in Griswold. I actually, I thought I lost the superintendent interview cuz I mentioned it in my interview. Of course, I have Betty Osk in the background taking notes and it is not a welcome topic with the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed believes in sports, they believe in supporting sports, and we have actually added sports. We added a freshman volleyball cuz our volleyball team is doing so well.
We added freshman.
Basketball, yeah, basketball, and there's some other sports.
And we were this close to a freshman baseball team.
Yep, there's, so there's some, so it's something, and in terms of art and, and drama, we, I think those are healthy programs. And if we could, I'd love to work with Ray and Aaron to get like a performing arts pathway. We are constantly adding clubs. We have Model UN and of course, we added esports, which is, i- is a little bit different. You know, it's, it's, it's a competitive after school activity, but we, the Board of Ed is committed to sustaining.
But these are also kids that were not gonna take part in wrestling.
Right.
Basketball, football.
And the esports, isn't that recognized like nationally?
Yes.
National.
Right.
Ours, what was the recognition last year?
We're in the top 10.
Top 10 in the country.
Country, right. I remember that. I remember seeing that. Yep, yep.
Uh, let's see, what about tennis?
So that has come up and.
I was on the Griswold tennis team.
Yeah, yeah, it has come up. And listen, if someone dropped me $8 million, I would love to do it all at once. The thing I wanna say about that is, it, it's definitely not being ignored. First things first, the multipurpose field, again, girls track, boys track. Girls soccer, boys soccer, football cheerleading, girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse. So now we're dealing with, what is that, nine sports? So is tennis a good sport? It's a great sport. Do we wanna get to that? Absolutely do, but we've gotta prioritize.
Same as the baseball field or softball, whatever, yeah. It, it can all happen at once.
We have to prioritize.
Yeah, there's gotta be a plan. Yep.
So where are we now?
I mean, we're at, we're. So, so the last.
How much and then what?
So, so we're at the point where, you know, and again, I can't emphasize this enough, planning stages. I don't want anyone saying, Sean, say, planning stages. The study is anticipated to be completed for the 11/28 Board of Ed meeting.
And I would encourage people to come and to listen to the presentation. And maybe we can move things around on the agenda.
Yeah.
And maybe we can have that first, then public comment or, cuz our public comments in the beginning section before presentations. So maybe we can do a little movement with the board.
Almost like a town meeting feel or kind of sort of maybe.
But you know, just so we can start getting it out there again and people understand it's in the planning stages, but come to the Board of Ed meeting because this is the next stage of presentation we're getting.
And you stream your meetings, yes?
We do, on Facebook.
Yep.
And they did, and Al was at the meeting about a month ago, he presented to the ad hoc and he was about 90% done. So it's just these final touches.
That's pretty exciting stuff. It really is.
We're really excited.
So I have a couple of questions right before you guys go. So I know you have seven sending towns now, right? So in middle schools, I've noticed because there are a lot of high school options, right, for middle schoolers. So in those sending towns, do you guys go and do like high school fairs, participate in the high school fairs at the middle schools or have open houses here for the middle schoolers?
Kathy, that's such a great question. We have supercharged it this year. So we just had an open round table with the superintendents yesterday. And that Aaron Palonen organized in our learning commons, we had a student panel, we had an open house a few, about a month and a half ago. Very, very well attended from sending towns.
Good.
Elaine Taylor, our Director of School Counseling, Aaron Palonen, the principal herself, physically, they go out to those, those schools. Um, I have a very solid relationship with all of those superintendents. We wanna, you know, we're here to help. Would I like a marketing budget? Yes, I would. But we make it happen in ways that we can.
Yep.
So, and then we have, we send the wonderful, ever talented Ray Churchill and team out to the sending towns to do performances. We, we invite them to the dress rehearsals for this musical. So there's lots of things happening and some of the stuff that you see here, that's part of our internal outreach to these towns.
Nice, good.
You have another one or you're good?
Nope, that was, that was the open house and the, the high school, the high school fairs. Those, I just found those so fascinating when my kids were in middle school. To go to these high school like fairs, it was like college fairs. And it was, I mean, it was almost overwhelming with the options that they have now and the competition. You know, that, that you're up against. I mean, it, it is, it's like going to a college fair. And you're trying to choose your high school like you would a college and you need to be competitive. You have to be competitive.
And to your point, I got another pop quiz. If you're looking at high schools.
Put my glasses on cuz it makes me look smart.
If you're looking at high schools and you're a family or you're driving with your child or you're driving with whomever you're responsible for and you're like, let's go into the Griswold campus. Oh my God, that beautiful sign. And then you drive and you're like, let's look at the fields. What do you think's gonna happen?
Well, let's.
If they're into sports, if sports, if sports is a priority for them, you know, they're, they're gonna be like, hmm, let's see what else, you know? It, you can't be doing that.
And the other thing about, the other thing about Griswold sports is, and I don't wanna knock other schools, but you have a better chance of playing in Griswold.
Yeah.
That's just facts.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you get more playtime.
That is, that is very true. I'm glad you said that. I really am glad you said that.
I have to say, those stairs are a killer workout, let me tell you.
Woo.
My daughter loves those stairs.
Oh my gosh.
She runs up and down.
I've used, I've used those stairs when I was running. Oh my God, they were, I'd run from my house, do the stairs, do laps, do the stairs or run back. I'd be dead. My legs, oh yeah, my legs were dead.
A couple more questions real quick, just before we, I know you guys have to go. Uh, Jen, I call you once in, light, lacrosse is pay to play. What about middle school basketball, tennis? We've kind of talked about that. We should not be a pay to play community, she says.
We're not.
These programs need to be reinstated at the same time.
Let me correct that. The only thing we are right now is that, she is correct with the girls lacrosse. And so that's the one sport and it is on our radar, so.
Okay, good.
And her last comment on that is, our school budget is too big for any family to pay to play sports. And she says, middle school soccer the same.
Yeah, so it sounds like just some miscommunication there.
Yeah, and you know, we're always here to, you know, certainly, there, again, let me be abundantly clear. The only sport right now is girls lacrosse. Everything else, there is no play to put. I almost lost the interview for that. There is no pay to play.
And honestly, and that's a good thing with the competition because a lot of other schools are pay to play. So that works in your favor, you know, to pull, to pull some of these kids in from the sending towns.
Right. What they do to generate the money to pay, offset this. We don't, we're trying to, we try to get these into our budget.
Yep.
Right.
And I, I love the fact that you said, and this is what it means to me as far as just being a resident. When you said, you know, that you probably have more of an opportunity to play, you know?
They do. I mean, like, you know, the, the coaches do a good job and we're, we're here for families and they, they try to get kids to, and you know, we have funded freshman teams recently. We've, we've definitely, so we're, we are committed to this. And if there's something that people don't understand, call Steve Cravino, the best, who, who's our athletic director, he's here to answer questions. Go and get the good information, you know, but there is, there is that play to play with a.
Girls lacrosse, yeah. And go to the meetings, you know, if you have questions, go to the meeting. And if you can't go to the meeting, meetings, watch it afterwards. You guys have it streamed.
Or call, we have.
Back and watch.
Kathy, great point. We have administrators that will return your phone call, call, you know, if you have a question about middle school, call Louis Zubek or Jeff Parkinson, they're gonna get back to you. You know, we're here to get good information out. And if there's a problem, we're here to work with people to solve the, to get to the solution.
We don't get people at our meetings.
I know, and that's the thing. And then of course, they go on social media.
Oh my gosh. Student is presenting something.
Yeah.
And, and it's, I understand, everybody is super busy. This is why we streamed through Facebook.
And I think that's great. I love the fact that you guys stream it cuz it is, it makes it more available.
I tell people right now, you know, it's like, if you don't go to the meetings, I tell, I, I look at that camera, I say, shut up.
Yeah.
Because you got nothing, that's me, you got nothing to say. If you didn't go to vote, you know, during the referendum and you gotta complain, shut up.
Or, and if you can't go to the meetings, read the minutes. I mean, there's, there are other options. Make some phone calls.
There's plenty of meetings I can't make because I've got such severe conflicts with the Board of Ed. Either I've got a Board of Ed meeting or as chair, I have to be at every subcommittee meeting.
Yeah.
So I've got all this going on and other things and I go on and I read everybody's meeting minutes.
Right.
So I know what's going on.
Yep. Yep.
Anything else you folks wanna add before?
Oh yeah, congratulations to Scott Frier, who is our new board member.
Our new board member.
Sworn in.
Congratulations.
Sworn in, so he will be sitting at the first, at his first board meeting on the 28th of November.
And thank you to everybody that interviewed with the board.
Everybody interviewed. We had great candidates.
How many people did you have interviewed? Wow. That's a great, oh, that makes me feel so good knowing that people, that many people wanted to get involved.
Typically, we've both, in the past when we've had to do this, it's been three each time. This time we had seven.
That just show, I mean, oh, that is like, that's awesome that people wanna get involved.
They all had a lot of, I learned a lot about all of them.
Yeah.
So things that I thought I, you know, I knew them, but once you start interviewing, you, you figure it out.
Have you, has Scott hit you with his demands yet?
No, no. He will.
Uh, I don't, I don't think right now we have really any other questions. I mean, I'm just.
All mine were answered. I had my list, my checklist here and I just checked them all off.
Guys, you know, really. We wanna thank you and Kathy. Kathy's like, I gotta tell you. I think you're, I think your numbers are gonna go up, Mr. Narski, and I think Mary Beth joins me in not just thanking you, but wishing everybody a happy, healthy, safe Thanksgiving holiday.
And holiday season.
Yes, you too. And I can't believe it's Thanksgiving, holidays all of a sudden.
I just wanna honestly thank you guys for, you know, I mean, really having the guts, you know, to put, you know, this field in, in, in the forefront of what we need because.
The kids deserve it.
The kids deserve it, want it.
And that's what we're here for.
And it'll benefit the town.
And it should have happened many years ago and you guys are doing it, so thank you for that.
And the English teacher in me is always, we wanna give credit where credit is due. This is not us. This is, there's a bunch of people, the ad hoc committee, parents.
Yeah, pushing and, yeah.
Yeah.
This is why we're here. This is why the Board of Ed is here. It's for the kids. It's for the kids.
Well, I appreciate everything you do, so.
Thank you.
Mr. McKenna.
Thank you guys very much.
Kathy, thank you.
Thank you. See you.
And thank you very much for the presence. I guess I'm wearing some of it. And here's one thing that I'll never, this will never come off. My Wolverine right here. All right. Thanks, guys. It was good.
That was good.
You can go back to your regular.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. All right, so that was, I thought, very informative, very cool. Nan Nan.
How's that? Is that better? Before I go and sit down and get all comfortable again?
Yeah, that's, I just didn't want the TV in the shot.
All right, is that good?
Uh huh. Yeah, that's fine. So that was, that was, that was very good. I, I, I don't want anybody to, to think that that was a rah rah session cuz it wasn't. It was a straight up fact.
Yeah, I thought it was informative, honestly. I mean, knowing what's going on and what the status is and what the next steps are and the meeting on Monday where they'll, it'll be presented. All good to know, you know, whether you're for it or against it.
Right, and it's still really, at the bottom, you know, the bottom line is, it's still up to the residents to decide what it is they want or don't want. I personally, all right, look, I'm not playing high school sports.
Me neither.
You know what? I broadcast high school sports, good field or bad field, I'm gonna be there.
Yep.
So, I mean, do I have a skin in the game really? Not really. What I, what I truly believe is that these kids deserve it.
Yeah.
You know, and you go to these other towns like Stonington has a beautiful field. There's a new team in the ECC. Weaver out in Hartford, first year program, they're back playing football, this is their first year back. Gorgeous, gorgeous field.
Yeah.
You know, in, in, in their area. And I look at ours.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, and it's, it, it, obviously, it's great for the kids and the students and drawing them in from those sending towns. But it's also for the, the residents. I mean, personally, I've used that track. My, my kids have gone down there and used the field and the track to, you know, play around or whatever.
I've watched Melissa walk around it.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you see a lot of people using it at night, especially in the warmer months, you know? And there are groups that go down and do like little exercise, you know, groups or running, running groups. And I mean, there's a lot, it's used by a lot of people here. It's, you know, it, I think it would just benefit everybody. The cost obviously is always going to be a factor, no matter what you're talking about, what kind of project it is. But I, I mean, it is what it is. I, I just, sometimes you kind of just have to swallow it. You know, you wanna try to, you know, keep costs down as much as you can, you know, it's not a free for all, but you know, I mean, yes, it's gonna cost money and.
Let's talk about community field, like the people say, well, I want a community center. Okay, I get that.
Yep, I, I get that. I, I agree with that too.
Like with, and I go back to this because there's so many things I thought were really, really cool that the school did. You know, as far as like, with me being associated with Jewett City Little League and doing football. We didn't have a field. We didn't have a field at all. Steve? Yeah, can we use the field? Oh yeah, by the way, can, can John cut the grass on the field too?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I mean, very much, yes, go ahead and use it.
Yep.
Jewett City Little League, this is what, I don't know if people know, but Jewett City Little League and Griswold Public Schools are not the same entity. They're totally different, totally separate. So when Griswold High School says to Jewett City Little League, yes, you can use that field for this, this. What about American Legion?
Yeah.
Griswold High School says yes. So these are all things that I, I, I think maybe we, some people.
Yep.
Take for granted.
Yep, or they just don't know, you know, they don't, they don't know. And, and that's why these meetings are important, you know, to go to. Seek out the information. You, you may have your initial reaction of, oh, this is gonna cost money, my taxes are gonna go up. No, 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 I don't have kids there, it just, you know.
Well, that's initial shock.
And I get it, right, and I, and I get it, but try to have an open mind, you know? And, and I'm not saying have an open mind so that it changes your mind, but just have an open mind. so that it changes your mind, but just have an open mind. Just absorb the facts, weigh, you know, weigh the, the risks, the benefits to you personally and to your community, you know, and that's all you can really do.
Yeah. I mean, do I know my taxes are going to go up? Yes.
They're always going to go up. If they don't go up for this, they're going to go up for something else. I mean, honestly, there's never a good time for taxes to go up. But they're going to.
Do I have a high school age student? Yes. Does she go to Griswold? No, because she lives on the other side of the state. Is it going to benefit her? No. Do I still want it? Yes.
No, because it's good for the community.
Again, are my taxes gonna go up? Yes. Ten times. Yes. I'm, I'm, I'm ready.
They're gonna go up.
Absolutely ready for that. So.
They're gonna go up. And if you lived in another town, they'd go up there too. I mean, no matter where you are, this, these types of things happen. These projects happen, you know, if it's not this type of project, it's another type of project. You're not going to get away from this.
But let's, let's, let's not forget too, when the senior center, center came up, I said, yeah, personally, yes. Why? Because one of the things that Mr. McKenna and Ms. Malin brought up, Mrs. Malin said, is that you look at that sign, you know, and there's that image, you know, just portrayed through that sign, right? There, I think there are these two big things that people look at when they come to, you know, the, one or the other, either a good school system.
Yep.
What are the amenities in a senior center?
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Because you got them coming and going. I mean.
Seriously. Yeah.
But I mean, it's, it's really, really true.
Yep.
Now, did I vote yes on the senior center personally? Yes, I did. Because I think the seniors deserve it. Just like the kids deserve this. And you know what?
And you could join it.
I can. I know. Fifty five and up. I love bingo. So, but.
And, and a lot of the folks here now, you know, as far as the senior center goes, you, you, you know, may not be old enough yet, but you will be. And, and you know, and you'll probably be thankful when you're that age that, that it's there, you know?
And speaking of the senior center, tomorrow Tina will be up to the senior center.
Awesome.
We're going to talk about the, the new senior center. What's happening over there? We're going to tell you tomorrow. And then we're also going to talk a little bit about RSV.
Oh. That sounds super exciting.
Next on PBS.
RSV.
No, it's a thing. It's a big thing.
It is a thing. It's a thing.
You know, we talked about COVID for years and now RSV is the latest and the greatest.
Yeah, it's the thing.
No, it's not going to be bad. It's just, you should be armed with a little bit of information. So.
Yep.
So that is tomorrow along with Paul and Mr. Negative Nancy. And.
Retiree Row.
Retiree Row, Chris Goodness.
I, I do want to mention this Saturday is the spaghetti dinner benefit for Lieutenant Scott Walker of the Jewett City Fire Department. Raising money. He's battling cancer right now and, and we're having a benefit for him at the Jewett City Fire Department on Saturday. Tickets, I believe are fifteen dollars. You can, Jewett City Firehouse, the Greenhouse, contact me, Rich, you know, any of the firemen there. We can get you tickets. You can get tickets at the door. There'll be raffles and, and all sorts of things. So, you know, we, we'd really like to see, you know, people come out and, and support that. You know, I know personally, he's had Rich's back in fire several times and it's, you know, we, we want to be there for him and have his back. So just want to put that out there. Also today's United Way Food Drive, food distribution at the high school, four o'clock, I believe. At the high school, don't line up before three forty-five because you'll get kind of mixed up with the kids that are getting out of school. But so there's that going on. I think that's about it.
Rich says, beautiful. I, I, Rich, I know. He's probably not talking about me, but.
He might be.
Was hoping. Well, thank you for coming in after your morning you had.
Yeah. I'm not a morning person. And then, you know, wow, I need a ride to the airport at four thirty in the morning.
Is Rich a morning?
Yes. Yes. I know. Cause I'm at the airport dropping them off and there's, I see my dog go out the back door and I'm like, why are you up? Like what, what's on the cameras? And he's like, I couldn't go back to sleep.
I know, I know that if, if Melissa is off on a weekend and I'm off, you know, the alarm will, like somebody will forget to turn the alarm off.
Yeah.
Right?
Are you getting up?
No.
No, I came, I got back home, I don't know, five, six o'clock maybe. And oh yeah, he was up. He was already doing schoolwork. He had a pot of coffee going. He was like, like it was middle of the day and I got home and I curled up on the couch and I'm like falling half asleep. I'm not a morning person. He's, he's the, I'm more of a night owl.
Richard.
Yeah.
Victoria, who's always very, I gotta say, is, is, she's a very generous lady. She's very, very kind and generous. And yeah, I said it. Okay. Victoria, and I mean it. She wants to know if there's a way to donate. She goes, our fire company has a, their own dinner on Saturday.
Oh.
But she wants to know if there's a way and Rich, Mr. Morning Breakfast Coffee Guy says, you can Venmo him.
Yep.
So there you go.
Yep. Yeah. You can Venmo Rich and we'll get it to the fire department.
All right.
Thank you.
If, yeah. So anybody, if, if you want to go ahead and donate to the cause, certainly can do so, even if you can't make it, just send Rich a message. And I'm sure he'll hook you up.
Absolutely.
With the, the Venmo and whatever.
Yeah. We, we appreciate any support for that.
Anything else? You got anything else?
I don't think so. I don't know. It's so, it's so early. I know Thanksgiving's next Thursday.
I know.
So this weekend's probably going to be a big food shopping weekend for a lot of people. Get out there and, and, you know, spend those, spend your money on those inflated prices for everything. I know it's, it's crazy. But yeah, so that's next Thursday and.
I gotta tell you a quick story before we go.
Go for it. It's your show.
Sound a little more fake excited. Oh, really? Oh, that's great.
That was my radio voice.
Oh, that was good. That was good. So there was, there's this one thing that I've, that I've kind of wanted for a long time.
Is this what you talked about yesterday? I heard and I watched the show. You were talking about it with Paul.
Oh, with Rihanna?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I talked to Melissa.
Named Paco, right?
Paco, yes. Anyway, just got a, I got a text from my, my ex. So you know about your gift? And all I can say is that my daughter was so excited.
I'm sure.
You know, because, because she's such a sweet kid. She really is. She's a sweet, sweet kid with a huge heart. And she likes to give.
Yeah.
And yeah, it's my kid, but it's true.
That's a big, that's, that's pretty cool though, that she did that. That's.
So she went out and got, you know, with the help of her mom.
Yep.
Got this. This, this gift, which, all right, I'm going to say it's a bearded dragon. And I've wanted one for so long. And it was funny how she said it too. She goes, she goes, I'll tell you right now, but don't let mom know. So I don't know how she knows, but that I know. But so she goes, all I can tell you is I named him Paco.
I love it.
And I'm like, well, that's not giving it away.
I love it. That's a great name.
And I went, she goes, him.
That's really cool. How are Harry and Howie and Henry gonna deal with that?
That the deal with it, because when Paco gets to be about almost two and a half feet long, they're going to be scared to death they have.
Is he going to be in a, in a aquarium thing or?
Yeah, but I'm gonna have to get, you know, a big, big one because I want to make sure he, because like turtles, like they grow to their environment, right?
Yeah.
So.
So you're not going to just like let him loose in the house and get him to be like an alligator size or anything and just kind of like crawl around?
I'd like that. I'd like to, I'll get a, I'll get a bigger, a bigger unit for him.
Yeah.
And stuff, but I, I want him to be able to like, get like iguana size.
Oh my God.
And walk, get, walk in here.
That's it. Oh my gosh. You know what? You could get him a little, get him a.
And walk him. Yes.
Walk him. Yes.
This is Howie, Henry and Paco. Is Paco Spanish?
Oh my God.
Oh, he's a bearded dragon.
That is so funny. Oh my God.
You could, you could.
You absolutely could.
And they're cuddly.
Are they?
They're cuddly. They're like, of all the lizards.
Soft, are they?
Yeah. Of all the lizards.
Really?
They're like the friendliest, cleanest, non-smelling lizards of all time.
I'll take your word for it.
So, yeah. No, I've, I've read a whole bunch of things.
Oh my God. If you go walking him, you gotta walk by our house.
Well, he's got to grow. He's a hatchling right now. So.
So he's a little baby.
He's just a baby, but that big, right? So, but.
That's so cool.
So anyway, Melissa, Melissa agreed, okay. Camera goes, I ain't cleaning that cage.
Yeah. Yeah. It'll, it's, it's your, your Paco. You clean it.
Victoria says, wait until the crickets start chirping at night.
Oh, that's right.
That was the end of the bearded dragons in my house. Something about bringing live bugs into the house was just gross.
Yeah. I didn't think of that. Ooh. So they eat crickets? Not like, not like snakes where they eat mice? They eat crickets?
Yeah. Crickets and vegetables, lettuce.
Oh, okay.
That kind of stuff. Leaky greens.
Can they be dead crickets? Can you feed them dead crickets?
Yeah, but you know, I'm, I'm not.
So they're not chirping?
You know, it's, it's natural selection, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, I did, I, one thing that I didn't like is I did see a, a friend of mine who had a boa and gave him a bunny.
Oh.
And the bunny was alive.
Oh, yeah. No, 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 I couldn't do that.
Yeah. And I'm like, he goes, watch. I'm like, I don't want to watch. And then he just, you know, the bunny just. And then.
My dog got a bunny one night.
And then the, then the snake doesn't move for like a week.
Because it's digesting, right? Yeah. Going through that whole process. Yeah, no. No. Bunnies are so stinking cute.
But it's natural selection.
I know. It is. It is. I know. It's kind of just the way it works, but. Oh, one other thing.
Victoria says, yep, they have to be alive.
Oh, duck.
Polino goes, Paco will be the official mascot of We Love the Eighties.
Yes. Absolutely.
Good ideas. And Cindy says, I'm so, I'm so excited to meet him, but I'm terrified of reptiles.
You gotta bring them in here.
He's gonna be here.
Put him on your shoulder. You could be like a pirate with a parrot, but you'll be, you'll be Mike with Paco.
Oh, you were gonna say something.
Yeah. Just a quick question. For folks that live over on Ashland Street, you'll notice there's a some new hardware, I guess you could call it, or Christmas lights, they're red, blinking on the stop signs at Carly and Ashland. So for those folks who like to just blow right through there, because maybe they don't see them.
Maybe there are cameras on there too.
There might be cameras on there. There might be.
Why don't you find out?
Just saying. But yeah, you, you can't, you can't miss those stop signs now. So just a heads up. And the, the resident trooper has been sitting there watching on Carly. So you've been warned, those red lights are, are, you can't miss them.
And my house right across the street, I just sit there and laugh.
Yeah. And I mean, because people, yeah, I've seen so many people just blow right through or just, some of them don't even slow down. They just keep going like they're not even there. Other people will kind of do the rolling stop, you know, thing. But yeah, so you'll, you'll notice those red, big, they almost look like, they're like the size of like a red traffic light, like just on the top of the stop sign. You can't miss it.
So I got a whole thing about the whole rolling stop thing.
Yeah.
So like, let's say, here, here's a joke. Cop pulls over a guy. He goes, hey, you, what, you rolled through that stop sign? Guy goes, no, didn't I stop? He goes, no. You rolled through it. You did not stop at all. The guy said, hey, look, there was nobody coming. I looked left, I looked right, nobody was coming. I rolled right on through. He goes, slow down, stop. What's the difference? Guy goes, cop goes, get out of the car. Guy gets out of the car, takes out his billy club or his flapjack or whatever, starts whacking him in the shoulder. He goes, now, do you want me to slow down? Or do you want me to stop? So.
There is a difference.
There's a big difference.
There is a difference and I get it, you know, it's like, why do we have to stop there, you know, but it, it's honestly to slow people down. Because Ashland Street's kind of a racetrack. It's a straightaway right there. People just tend to kind of fly right by.
Kids around there.
There are a lot of kids on bikes. There's a lot of kids in that area on the side streets. There's a lot of kids. You know, kids are out there playing basketball. I've seen a lot of kids outside playing, which is, I love seeing that. But yeah, and it's, those stop signs are to slow people down going down Ashland Street. So now, just so you know, those, those lights are up. There may be cameras there.
Maybe.
Resident Trooper may be watching. So just a warning.
There are cameras in a little bit few different places right now.
Yes. And more to come. More to come in the borough.
The money borough. All right. Kathy, thanks for, you know, with everything. We both had mornings, didn't we?
Yeah, we did. Now I got to go to work.